If everyone could take their seats please. The Chair would like to call to order tonight's regular meeting of the CUS 2001 Board of Education, August 27, 2019. And roll call please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mrs. Charlton.
Here.
Mrs. Coyle.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mr. Rudy.
Here.
Mrs. Stromeier.
Here.
Wilson. Thank you.
If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation.
So moved. Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mrs. Stromeier.
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton.
Yes.
Thank you.
evaluation.
So moved. Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mrs. Stromeier.
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the board has returned from the first closed session. And now the chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session for the -- to discuss collective bargaining and personnel issues.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call please.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mrs. Strohmeyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we will be done by seven o'clock, then we will be back out for open itself.
Back on its own. Won't make your way.
Mrs. Charlton.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we will be done by seven o'clock, and we will be back out for open itself.
Back on its own. Won't make your way.[185.31]
If everyone could take your seats. So we are reconvening our open session after closed session. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August 13, 2019 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the first closed session of the August 13, 2019 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the second closed session of the August 13, 2019 regular meeting with Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is introduction of the new staff. And what we thought we would do is we'd have the principals introduce the new staff for each building and then because we are televised, we would like to make sure that everybody gets to see our new staff. So maybe as you introduce each person, they could come here and be seen. Does that sound good?
Be on camera.
And we'll start with Manning and Lindsay Petersak, the principal of Manning.
Good evening, how is everyone?
Great.
How are you? You sound great.
How are you doing?
I was trying to deflect. We are happy to introduce a couple of staff members, two which are shared between Manning and Miller's, but I get the honors of doing it first if that's okay. We'll start with our new speech pathologist at Manning, Yasmin Sitab Khan. So if you want to come on up.
Hi. Thank you.
That's not TV now.
Famous.
You're a YouTube star.
We have a new music teacher for Manning and Miller, Ms. Allison Libida. And finally, we have a new assistant principal for Manning and Miller, Ms. Sandy Moliere. Photo opportunity? We're so excited to have you, welcome to the district, we will not put you on the spot like this again.
We might.
Okay.
And Tim Miller? Or Tim Wyler from Miller?
It's Tim Miller.
Tim Miller.
I get called Tim Miller so much, I might be changing my last name. I wanted to introduce our new staff. Would you like me to call up everyone, even including the people that Lindsay Petersak? All right, very good. So Ms. Moliere, assistant principal, come on up. Allison Libida, come on up as our music teacher. And I had a little trick to get everyone here tonight. I said either they had to have a 10-minute video presented to us or show up. So they decided to show up. So that was good. And then some of the staff that haven't been introduced yet, we have Laura Tarnow is a second grade teacher at Miller. She lives in Downers Grove and attended the University of Illinois, Go Illini, and took a long-term sub position last year as our librarian at Miller, so we're very happy to have her. Kelly Brittick, come on up, Kelly. Kelly lives in Westmont, so she is a Westmontite, and she taught in Cicero and actually student taught for, at South School with Lillian Si. So she knows the district. Mary Beth Fagan, our new social worker, come on up. Mary Beth has enlightened us all at Miller as our full-time social worker for the school year. She comes from Frankfurt, New Lennox area and is also a professor at Loyola University, one to two nights a week. So she stays very busy, but we're very happy to have everyone join us in the district. So welcome. Ah, board, am I missing anyone? Perfect. Thank you.
And Amy Quatron, assistant principal at the junior high. Will introduce the new staff at the junior high.
Good evening, everyone. I have notes, I'm sorry, but it will be quick, I promise you. Mr. Johnek and I feel very fortunate to work in such a special place as Westmont Junior High, and I feel also fortunate to introduce to you three very special people. And the first one is Mrs. McGovern. She teaches dual language, our first dual language. I wanted to give you just some insight into our new teachers, so this is why I'm going to read from my notes. So, I asked Mrs. McGovern what her philosophy of teaching was, and she said her philosophy and mission is to make sure that every student gets the same access to a quality education and the opportunity to succeed. She loves teaching Spanish and dual language because she's passionate about teaching children about the bigger picture in life, about being better contributors to our global society and building confidence and enthusiasm in fully experiencing the world around them.
Awesome.
And Russ Ali, who is not here with us tonight, he is our industrial arts teacher. But he became a teacher because of his, he wants to mentor students because of his experience in industrial arts in junior high. He was led by his mentor, his industrial arts teacher, to open up his own business. It's called Rustoration.
Nice.
Clever. And he really wanted to be here tonight, but he had a family obligation. He wants to inspire students to, who may not know that they like to work with their hands and in pursuing that passion. And then finally, Alyssa Woody, she's our eighth grade special education. Alyssa developed her passion for special ed through her mission trip work at a camp that serves both children and adults with needs called Camp Courageous, and it's in Iowa. If you haven't heard of it, look it up, she says it's awesome and it gives experiences to those who may not have access to activities that we take for granted every day. So it's a very special place. So three special people and three very special Panthers. Thanks.
Mr. Baldwin for the high school.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you. We have two excellent new additions to our amazing teaching staff. First of all, gentleman who brings some excellent relevant background and teaching experience to our business department, Mr. Ken Shum. And joining our English department, he'll be teaching AP English and college readiness, and he comes with some really great experience already in teaching these subjects at Romeo Ville High School, and we're very glad to add him to our staff, Mr. Alec Palmer. She was not able to be here tonight, but our new band director is off to a strong start, Rachel Finnis. She was with us at the end of last year, but she's full-time this year and she's done a great job, so we're also proud to add Rachel this year to our team.
Thank you.
So thank you all for coming. We would love to see you back here at a meeting at some point, maybe to give us some sort of presentation or something, so just FYI. Okay, thank you. And you are certainly free to stay for the resting meeting. However, I know tomorrow's a school day, yeah. So, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome.
Okay, then we have public comments, and Courtney Templeton has...
Good evening. I am not here to ruffle feathers or point fingers, but I just wanted the board to be aware of some frustrations that some parents have been having through the junior high and the high school. We're just not getting daily announcements. And I know this has been a technological challenge, it was one last year. I'm getting them every other day, sometimes this year I've gotten them twice from the junior high and not from the high school at all. And so I was going to be here tonight anyway because, you know, I care about the district, but I thought that it would be important that the board knew, and I don't know what we can do, but communication, if communication is so important in the district and parents want to be informed and Facebook just doesn't reach everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we look into that? I get the question, are there daily announcements every day? I don't know what the, okay, so there are.
I'll have to check with, have Nadine look into it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, any other public comments? All right, consent agenda? The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendations, employment of licensed staff. Rebecca Weiglars, long-term substitute special education teacher, Westmont Junior High School. Jill Kay Jackson, long-term substitute social worker, Westmont Junior High School. Dan Wolfe, physical education teacher, increase in FTE from .8 FTE to 1.0 FTE, Westmont High School. Employment of support staff, Joshua Torrens, 1.0 teacher assistant, Westmont High School. Two, ratification of July 2019 regular payroll, and three, approval of August 2019 expenditure report.
So moved. Second.
And roll call, please.
Mrs. Coyle.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturmeyer.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yeah.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the first item for discussion or information, presentation of monthly financial statements, Ms. Anderson.
Yeah, we have the June 2019 financial statements for your review. The district received $146,000 from the state this month, $120,000 was for FY19 evidence-based funding model payments. There are approximately $215,000 of FY19 payments that were vouched, but not paid to the district by June 30th. The state owes the district for the fourth quarter mandated categoricals. We did receive two installments of the 2018 property tax levy in the amount of $11.6 million. So total property taxes collected by June 30th were $12.2 million, which is a 50.57% collection rate. Just the last two years' collections rates were 52.69 and 50.88% respectively. So we typically receive between 49.5 and 50.5%. Last year, you'll recall, it was higher because of the early tax payments because of some new tax legislation. So it looks like we're back into the, you know, typical trend level this year. In the Ed and Tort funds, revenues are comparable to the prior year average. We received $146,000 of fiscal year 19 payments in the Ed Fund, and there's $64,000 of fiscal year 19 payments that we're still waiting on. In the O and M Fund, the revenues were comparable to the prior year average. And in the Transportation Fund, revenues fluctuate year to year, and that's because of the timing of state payments. So the states vouched the fourth quarter FY19 payments in the amount of $151,000. And then as far as expenditures go, in the Ed Fund, they were comparable to the prior year. And in the O and M Fund, again, may vary from year to year, we were 91% spent to date in the O and M Fund, and last year 83% spent to date. And then again, Transportation Fund, they vary from year to year based on timing of payments or invoices from vendors. So the fund balance accounts are there, student activities, and the lunch report is there. I don't know if anyone has any questions?
I have a question about the fund balance for Manning. So the fund 60 for the gifted...
The student activity account?
I'm sorry, yes. Thank you, sorry, Kim.
Okay.
So the number 60, which is the gifted, so the beginning balance and the ending balance, what are we using that fund for since we don't have an accelerated or gifted program?
That would be something that the Manning principal would be in charge of. So they might have, I don't know if they were going to do some kind of program or something. You can see that they didn't get any revenues in or spend anything in there last year. So that would be something that at some point, are they going to continue that or do we need to eliminate that account? Any other questions?
Okay, move on to the next item for discussion is emergency day options.
At the August 13 board meeting, the board discussed the options for emergency days for the school year, and one consideration was the e-learning. And the board expressed some reservations primarily for early grade levels and then also students with IEPs and 504s, whether or not we could truly replicate the learning experience that would happen in the classroom. And the other option the board wanted information on is if using some of the holidays, non-attendance days as the makeup days. And so I did look at two possible dates. One would be February 17th, which is President's Day, and then April 13th is the Monday after Easter. Those are currently two non-attendance days. And so some districts do this where if, for instance, for February 17th, if no snow days were used prior to the 17th, then that would be a non-attendance day holiday. But if the district did have to use a day, then that would become an attendance day. And, you know, we do have to consider obviously families' planned trips on long weekends, even sometimes employees, and so we need to be communicating that to our families if we decide to go that direction. And then also, you know, we need to work with our different bargaining units because they have paid holidays, and so we'd have to work with them on that snow day ends up being, in essence, the paid holiday. And so then they would work on the holiday itself. And then also, you know, 12-month employees are a little trickier and working through how we would compensate them, either floating holiday or an added vacation day. And then for employees who do have a planned day off, that, you know, they can't change the trip or something, then again, working with our bargaining units, you know, how would they be able to use a long time off for that? Would that have to be considered a doc day? And then the last piece would be working with Westway, our transportation provider. We'd need to know how much lead time they would need. You know, right now, they're not playing on us being in session, for instance, February 17th. So if we needed to be in session February 17th, how much lead time would they need in order to make the adjustments on their end in order to provide the transportation?
The adjustments on their end, though, seem likely that they would accommodate based on the fact that other districts in the area do this type of flexible scheduling on those days, is that correct?
Right, there are other districts that do it.
So I did hear from one parent just writing, you know, views and stuff, and we want to make sure that we are saying out loud once again that we are not talking at all about interrupting spring break. So I just want to make sure that we're talking about that.
Don't touch spring.
We're not touching spring break. So I guess where we are kind of with this discussion, in case anyone is listening today, what we had proposed was potentially the first two snow days, and hopefully that's all we would have anymore, could be potential, could be used this way. And if there were any others, then they would be added to the end of the school year. But if the board wanted to go this route, we would get that information out to our families after tonight, hopefully, or whatever. So people knew now at the beginning of the school year.
Right. Right, we do have to touch base with our unions.
Yes, yes.
You know, through that piece, and then we need to reach out to Westway. But as soon as we get all those pieces in place, then yes, we would be able to communicate that.
Okay, so to the rest of the board, what, I like this, I think it's good, I think it's a good compromise. Hopefully, now that we have thought about this, maybe it won't happen anymore, we won't have any more. But to the extent it is, I think it is an answer to things that we've been asked, so. Anyone else want to?
Well, I mean, for me, I just don't see the point in all of this. It seems like a lot of manipulating things around to make this work and what really is the benefit here. We're talking to the unions, we're going to be adjusting pays and days off for certain employees, that's a lot of back. And I just don't understand what the motivation is really for this, I just don't see a big benefit in it. I mean, I'm fine with it if the board majority goes for it, you know, it's not that big of a thing, but it's just like, it seems like, we've talked about it a couple of times, I definitely didn't like the e-learning element to it for the reasons that you mentioned, Kevin. But I don't know, what's the difference of taking a holiday or just adding it on to the end of the year like we've always done, so.
I'm going to speak up and say I tend to agree with Joel. I think this is a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of rejiggering, for lack of a better word, of things to really address what might be, might be, two to three days of the school year. I think we had four last year and that was an anomaly year. I just don't know that it is, I think we've spent a lot of time on it already, and I don't see the real need to go through much more manipulation of data or investigation to move these days around.
I think too, the, it would be nice if Westway was our only transportation provider, but they're not. We have other, we have other things at issue with both for special needs bussing and then also with daycare and how that gets handled. Usually when schools close, daycare is closed, so are their buses going to pick the kids up that difficulty pick those kids? So there's just a lot of moving parts to this that I think we're either A, rushing into, or B, spending too much time on to realize there's too many moving parts to move it forward.
Yeah, I think if we wanted to move forward, I would not want to move forward this year. I would want to research everything and implement it next year. So families knew, I don't know how families know, I don't know how our teachers and our staff feel, I don't know how, all the collateral impact. So I think if we wanted to prior, one of the reasons we were talking about it was that we would have more actual instructional days closer to the time that instruction is happening. So instead of in February, being able to go through the current lesson versus instruction happening at the very end of the year, where things might just get kind of thrown together because most of finals are done and things like that. But I think it feels really rushed to do it this year, to me. Feels like we might make some mistakes if we try to force it to happen this year.
Gary, Judy, you want to weigh in at all?
I agree. I agree with Joel.
I'm always concerned about the loss of valuable education time. And I said at the last meeting, you know, when you tack the days on at the end of the year, the kids aren't doing anything on those days because we all know the curriculum's over at that time. However, I think rushing into it would be bad. I think it'd probably inevitably cost us more money this year in some fashion, whether it was paying teachers extra or giving extra paid days off or something like that. So until we have a more thought-out plan in place, I wouldn't want to do anything this year. I will say if we're going to spend a year investigating, I think we should spend a lot of time investigating the e-learning aspect to see what it would look like and how it might operate, particularly for the lower levels. Okay, because that's really the concern is the lower level. What does e-learning look like for a kindergarten, or what does it look like for a first grader, what does it look like for a second grader? And is that actual feasible? Because the other thing, I mean, as much as it'd be great to interplay into much of those days, as I said before, there's just so much there in terms of scheduling everything that it just seems extremely difficult, even for a small district, so.
So, and thank you, Kevin. We didn't really, your memo didn't address e-learning, this one.
Right, right.
But I think what we're hearing, and if everyone is, I think we kind of talked about that last time in terms of e-learning, if we can look into that. I just want to just back up to one thing. I think one of the reasons that we did talk about this to the extent that was because of the piece of, is it more beneficial to the students and their education to continue in February and April or tack them on at the end of the school year? So just so people know what, that these questions have come up through the years. So because of e-learning, this is really the first time we've ever looked at it. So it sounds like maybe we, if I'm correct, that we are not, we don't want to implement anything this year. But if we could look into these specific things, what are the costs, what are the pieces here, as well as what e-learning would look like specifically to the younger students?
Yeah, we can do that.
Does that sound...
So I just want to be, I'm, you know, from what I understand about e-learning right now, I don't think I'm going to hear much that's going to make, change my mind on it, you know? And if other board members feel that same way, should we even go down this path of spending staff time to research? spending staff time to research something that we're just going to bring back, and then people already kind of made their minds up or something? So I'm like a no on that, like even spending a lot of time on it. So if there's anybody else, or if you want to go forward with that?
I'd like to see what it could look like, I would. I know every year, except for one so far, that my children have been here, we've had snow days. And I just, I just think tacking them on to the end of the school year, I don't know, it's just, it's just loss of educational experience to me. And the modern generation is, you know, becoming more and more online. And I agree, the lower levels, it really concerns me. I don't know what it could look like for a first grader or a second grader, and that's where I'd want to be focused. Show me what a first grader is really going to be doing on this e-learning day. That's all I would say.
I agree with Gary on that one, I think it's probably something we'll have to investigate eventually. And I think specifically, if there are other districts either nearby or wherever who are learned, who are using it successfully, and successfully especially for the lower grades, grade levels, I think that would be really interesting for us to know. On the flip side, Joel, you know, I also, my personal opinion about this whole conversation is, I don't believe that the district should be spending an absorbent amount of time talking about these few potential days each year. So I think, you know, we would leave it to your judgment to balance how much time you spend.
I hate to jump right back in, I agree with that. So I guess my first question would be, without spending a lot of time, is what other elementary age schools are doing it, or unit districts are doing it? Let's see a list there, and let's, I mean, just very basic, I mean, who's doing it right now at the elementary level, and what does their program look like? We don't have to spend a lot of time on it, okay? Just how many schools are actually doing it at the elementary level would be the very first question I would ask. And if we find out that there's only three, well, okay, now we know why. But if there's fifty, well, that's something different then, then we can at least look at their program, that's what I would say.
I would, I would like that expanded beyond the lower levels to include students with IEPs.
That's a great point.
And the other, the other question I have, or the other thought I had, listening to the conversation, both last meeting and this one, is last year was the anomaly year, and we've talked about that there were four, four emergency days last year, and so it was a really messed up year, and it really messed up the whole thing. But did our, and the other thing I know too, are testing days are testing days are scheduled, those are not flexible. So if we lose four days of instruction prior to a testing day, whether it's a month or two or three ahead of that testing day, it doesn't matter, they've lost those days. I'm curious if we had a massive drop in test scores between the year where we had two days off and four days off, or one day off and four days off? Did we see some kind of impact in the learning ability of our students and the teaching ability of our teachers in that time span, that those four days or two other days that we would typically, because I believe we all kind of felt two days were a more average type of thing? Did we see some big impact? And if so, then we need to address it. If we don't see an enormous impact, then I think we need to treat it as the anomaly it was and move beyond it, and not spend any time.
Sure.
Well, I have to agree, I think, you know, obviously, technology's not going to go backwards, so I do, I feel strongly too about the, our youngest learners and IEPs and especially minutes and all that kind of stuff, how it would look. But again, everyone already has a full plate, so, you know, if we could get some initial data. Also, you had brought to us other things too, like what about families that don't have internet, and what about if the parents aren't home and all that stuff? So, you know, again, if it takes a boatload of time, we don't want to have anybody
Sure.
do anything different. But again, like we're saying, if there's fifty districts around here doing it, maybe we should.
I'd find out how many districts are actually doing it at the elementary and IEP level.
That's, that's the piece. So if you could, you know, give us some parameters on that before really anybody takes off on any kind of work.
Correct.
Okay, so are we in agreement that we are not going to adjust the calendar at all this year? We're going to keep our fingers crossed and hope that we can get through a good winter. And if we want to address it at a later date, we can, and you will let us know something about potentially.
Right.
Okay, is that right? Is everybody comfortable?
Yes.
Sounds good. All right, then we will move on to superintendent's report.
First item is, it's, you know, we've got to start the school year, and it's hard to believe that our fall athletic season is already in full swing. We've had some of our teams at the junior high and high school already competing, and then tomorrow night, our volleyball team opens their season, and then this Friday will be our first home football game. So it's amazing that we've already are in that point of the year. And so we're encouraging everyone to come out and support our junior and high school athletic teams. Also, with regards to the high school and transcripts, the class rank should be on every transcript. There's a little bit of, the teachers have until the second day of the school year, so August twentieth it was this year, to make any grade changes. And so there's a little bit of a lull where the registrar is entering grades, and so their, that was, class rates can fluctuate, so sometimes transcripts are printed without the class rank because, again, it could be a little bit fluid at the beginning of the year, but definitely the class rank will be on transcripts, and if anybody received one, that didn't have one, just contact the high school though.
Is there a spot in Skyward a parent or a student can find that ranking?
Um, I'll have to ask Gary.
Because my daughter got her class change thing, and she was actually disappointed that her class ranking was not on there.
Well, Gary, the reason this.
Right, and that's just, it takes, the registrar was telling me she has about a hundred changes to make, so it takes a little bit of kind of.
I was just wondering if it's in Skyward somewhere.
Yes, I can find out.
Yeah, the reason this came up is because, again, seniors, are the seniors the only one that get the transcript? You get this thing at this time of year? Yeah, okay, so I imagine that they do that because of college applications. So I noticed it didn't have the class rank, so I wrote to our registrar, and she very quickly gave me another version that did have the class rank. And so I asked Kevin to look into that, because we had talked about as a board that
We wanted it on there.
that it's not there, and that if parents didn't want it, then they could opt out of it. So I had asked Kevin to check on that. So I, you know, I don't, I don't think it's on Skyward because I didn't see it there. But I also asked Kevin if he could make sure that, like, I got this only because I asked for it, so if we could have it reset to parents.
Sure, sure.
Who, and if someone doesn't want the class rank, and they're not using that for applications. And that, because I got this on Friday, and Friday was the, what was Friday, the third day of school or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, anyway, and so she was able to give us that. So if we could.
Sure.
follow up with our families to make sure.
Yep, I'll do that. And then the, we're not quiet, the sixth day of enrollment, that's the official state report, but I did provide you with updated enrollments for each of the buildings since we opened our doors. And I did break out, the question was, could we start breaking out Miller, the mono, from the dual language, because that does, you know, to look at two sections when you don't know how they're staffed. And right now, all of our class sizes fall within the guidelines. And we'll continue to monitor those.
Just to note that the Miller mono-language first grade is two sections, that looks Right. unusually high, but.
Right.
Yeah, I look at that.
That is two sections, yes.
The chart above it shows it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but that one, it's eighteen, yeah, not thirty-six.
So it is two sections, correct.
Two sections.
And then the last item I have is just in general, we've opened school, and the, it's been a great start to the school year. I want to thank the Westmont Police Department and the Westmont Fire Department for helping our junior high with their opening. They were in attendance and really made it an exciting opportunity for our young people to return to school. And just in general, all of our schools had a very welcoming environment. There were a couple of tiers, in some cases, more parents than students, but it's been really a very good opening, and a lot of positive energy in our, in our buildings.
Great. So, Cam, just to, is the bus thing going smoothly? I haven't heard too much.
There's a few, there's a few parents with some questions about some stops and stuff, so we're working through it. We always like to remind parents that, you know, give us five to seven school days to work through things, and especially this year with some changes. So hopefully, everyone understands that, and we are working through some of the changes that people have, you know, noticed or things that need to be addressed, so. And then we will be sending out something, sometimes parents are just kind of what they should expect, you know, from the, from their bus experience, so we will be working on a communication about that as well.
That, thank you, that would be great. Okay, good, that's nice to hear, especially whenever there's a change, to hear that it's going as, going smoothly, so. Okay, are you done, Kevin?
Yes, I am.
Okay, board reports, I was going to say the exact same thing about sports, and a number of the fall sports have started. I would just like to announce, since you can't go watch golf, that they started, and we did beat Lyle, so just in case anyone's keeping track of that. But yeah, so far, it seems like everything's going really well, and yeah, the first games, the first football game is this week. Okay, that's all I had.
I have two compliments.
Just want to wish our board president a happy birthday.
Yes.
See?
Happy birthday.
I had two, two compliments for, to echo what Kevin had mentioned about opening day. I had the privilege of being at four of our district's schools on the first day of school, and I wanted, and every, every school had a great welcoming environment, but I really wanted, so, the junior high just really always goes above and beyond on that day. I had a sixth grader starting his junior high experience, and if you've never been to the junior high on opening day, Mr. Jonak and Mrs. Quatron carried these big heart signs welcoming, that music going, there's a red carpet, and it just really above and beyond. So I wanted to publicly state that that's been the, their standard for years, but it's very appreciated. And the second compliment I wanted to give was, I've heard a lot of feedback from some of our Manning families that they have felt that the, their special needs students with IEPs and five oh four plans had, that their, that Manning is doing a really great job of getting those meetings scheduled really early this year, and they really appreciate that, so that their student can get accommodations right out of the gate, and so I just wanted to share that positive feedback as well.
And in case anyone missed it, the, there was an article in the paper by, with our principals at the junior high. Somehow, you guys rock because you get to be in the paper, but that's wonderful. Love that, love that. Okay, anything else?
No.
Board reports, all right, any other public comments? Okay, future meetings and events, there will be no school on Labor Day, September second for all schools. Westmont High School open house is on September fourth, starting at six thirty at the high school. Manning Elementary School Curriculum Night is September fifth at six o'clock at Manning. Miller Elementary School Curriculum Night, September ninth at six P.M. And the next school board meeting is September tenth at seven o'clock here at Village Hall. Is the junior highs doing something after the tenth? It, okay, well, then we'll talk about that. Just want to, as long as you're sitting here. Okay, then we do not have closed session, we did that already. The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Roll call please. I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a great evening.